But, yeah, a roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior absent, councilmember Rosas.
President.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vazaldi.
Here.
Mayor Julian.
Here, we have four. Would you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? Bring him.
Now, take a breath.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Exciting community participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on a topic that's not agendaized? I'll see if I can. We'll go to regular business. Approval of agreement between City of Guadalupe and the Pasadena Development and between the city of Guadalupe and Caltrans for Highway 166 improvement. Mr. Senko.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I apologize to the council, staff, and the public for not explaining in staff reports exactly why this is on for a special meeting. The reason why is because this item became an urgent matter when we learned that Caltrans needed action to be taken before November 7th or whatever the next meeting after tonight is, the next regular meeting.
Fourteenth.
On 14th, yeah, they needed action taken by, I think, November 2nd in order to make this happen, which we found, or at least I found out on Thursday last week, and there was not enough time to get this on for the regular meeting agenda. And I know how much you all love special meetings on Halloween or a Thursday or Wednesday. So I suggested that we hold a special meeting 15 minutes before our regular meeting today. So I know it came as a surprise because there wasn't much warning to the rest of you. The mayor was aware. So anyway, for the benefit of everybody, that's why this is on. But it should be relatively uncontroversial because this is a highly desired project. For the benefit of the public and those watching on YouTube channel. I guess that's what this, I'm not sure. The the project, excuse me, the Pasadena Development was approved back in November 2012. And one of the conditions that was required for the approval of the project involved some traffic improvements to 166, Highway 166. And those haven't been done and they're not, they weren't intended to be done at that time. They were deferred until a later time when they would be required and Caltrans would have something to say about that. SB CAG is also working on installing a traffic signal at Highway 1 and 166 intersection. And Caltrans also has some other projects going on on Highway 166. And so it approached the parties about a consolidated project and that's what this is about. The to make this happen, Caltrans requires a cooperative agreement between the city and Caltrans to basically receive funding for the project. Caltrans will be providing the main funding that's not provided by the cooperative agreement. And that cooperative agreement involves the city contributing 9.9 million for the project, which 5.5 million will come from Pasadena for its basically in lieu of its obligations under their development agreement and other documents to actually perform the improvements for Highway 166 that it was supposed to. So all the parties agreed that 5.5 million is a fair and reasonable substitution for the actual work that it would have been required to do. And so it's going to do that in addition to the next item. It's going to irrevocably, it's already irrevocably offered for dedication certain right of way along 166 from its property. And tonight, the next item, the city is going to, hopefully, the city council will accept those offers, which is also required for this project. The city's contribution, 4.4 million, has already been approved by your council for in September when, actually twice in last summer in July, I think, when 3.3 million was approved for this project. And then another 1.4 million was requested.
Measure A funding.
Yeah, measure A funding. And so the council already approved its 4.4 million share. So this item involves two resolutions to approve the two separate agreements. The main highlights are listed in the staff report. The In-Lu Funding Contribution Agreement between the city and Pasadena basically involves 5.5 million to be contributed by the developer, although that will not likely be paid prior to January 1st, 2027, unless certain things happen beforehand that actually require that money to be spent. The city's 4.4 million will be spent first and and only at that point will the developer's funding be required. And due to the way, due to the fact that the money is being spent, but the traffic improvements are not being performed for some time, but they would have been performed by Pasadena when they were doing housing in that area, part of the future phase developments. It was agreed that in order for the future policies to be developed and constructed in the Pasadena future stages, that the improvement required by the agreement had to be deemed satisfied by the execution of this agreement rather than the actual contribution of the funding. Partly because the funding is required, there's some expensive bridges that have to be built, so they need the money to do that. And there's no reason to have it until about 2027. So that was one of the key provisions that was negotiated for the agreement. This, by deeming it satisfied, it will allow them to continue with the project. As for the cooperative agreement, it's pretty basic. We signed what Caltrans basically told us to sign. And we give them $9.9 million when they, when they, they'll give us a notice before us do, about 45 days. And we don't really expect any of the money to be paid until at least 2025, the earliest. Okay, that is it for this item. So the action we're asking you to do is basically a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-87, approving the In-Lu Funding Contribution Agreement, and Resolution Number 2023-88, approving the cooperative agreement with the city, between the city and Caltrans. And I would appreciate second motions on that there, Your Honor. Thank you.
Any, we have a question, any comments from the councils? For yous back there, this is a, this isn't the regular meeting, so you're not late. So any comments or questions?
No, none.
I had one quick caveat to this. One was one of the big items was the Southern Pacific Railroad. And they're, they're signing for the lights there. Caltrans approached them. And Caltrans said, we don't, or Southern Pacific said, we don't want, we want one person in this whole mix, and that's Caltrans. And so they, they agreed to take this whole matter along with the railroad, along with Pasadena, along with the city, and button holding there, there upwards of, now, the whole project, about $31 million. So, and again, Phil mentioned that last Thursday, we actually zoomed about the timing. So that's why it was kind of rushed. I'll have Mr. Garrett. Mr. Garrett, that's right.
If you think, I'll keep it brief, but I appreciate you bringing up the railroad because that had been a question. First off, you also answered the question about communication. I was wondering if, if there was going to be regular updates on the project and from whom the public would be receiving those updates from. So it sounds like that's Caltrans?
Yeah, that's a good point. SB CAG, which has actually moved money over here to make this, make this happen. They're adamant about having input from the community in terms of that whole process. In December, I don't know if it was December, but we have, there's another project in December for Caltrans, which is Black Road. But they, they want to actually meet here to talk with people about what they're doing. You saw some conceptual plans for the, you know, for the roads there. That's all conceptual. They're even looking at, you know, our marquee coming in with the sand dunes on the right side. They were wondering what kind of pudding that had, because they're really going into detail as far as what's, what's happening. So they're going to be making sure that the community knows what's going on. The SB CAG board says, we want to know what's going on minute by minute. So there'll be ample discussion with the public in terms of what's going on there. Another point, I don't want to do it too long, but Taylor Farms, Caltrans met with Taylor Farms several times because of the issues with the trucks coming in. So that's all been, there's been a lot of homework done on this project. So this is a big one in terms of getting that money across so they can basically make sure that they don't lose that portion of the Caltrans money.
Okay, and then, so those are just conceptual drawings.
Yes.
The signalization at both Highway 1 and 166, or Biscayne 166, and the two-way stop, that isn't set in stone.
Or. It's pretty much, it's pretty much set in stone. I was wondering about Flower Street. But right at this point, that's where, in terms of money, because I don't know what it's, 3 million bucks for the, for the actual signalization, I want at least that, so.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I'm all for it. We've seen too many accidents there.
Right.
So it's, it's appreciated that this is moving forward. The only other question I had was has there been much discussion about how this may affect the commercial acreage?
Yes. A lot of discussion.
Yeah.
Because with, Mr. Craig Smith is here in terms of undergrounding, undergrounding the power, don't have it, having lines up there, getting power in. So that's why Caltrans wanted to work to make sure that they were digging things up and then putting it back, and then digging it up again. So they're, they're going to make sure that they're connected with the Pasadena Development.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Back to the, back to the.
Is that the only one?
Yes, that's the one. So you, you want these separate in terms of 2023-87? Is there a motion to approve or any questions at all regarding what we tried to accomplish? If not, is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-87?
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-87.
I'll second.
There's a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior absent, councilmember Rosas.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vazaldi.
Aye.
Mayor Julian.
Aye. That's, that's one of two. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-88?
I'll motion to adopt Resolution Number 2023-88.
I'll second that.
New discussion.
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior absent, councilmember Rosas.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vazaldi.
Aye.
Mayor Julian.
Aye. All ayes in the room.
Okay. What a big item. I think it's really impacts our community and it's been such a a large topic of discussion for us.
Hands, hands and slaps to Caltrans and also our staff. I don't feel that to miss a couple of hours of sleep and get this done, so. I think that's it for this. One more. You got it. Thank you, Mayor. This item should be briefer than the other one since I don't have to explain, than I explained before about the background. Now that the two other agreements have been approved, Caltrans is requiring that the city accept the irrevocable offer of, well, offers of dedication of portions of lots, 1, 2, 3, and 10 from the Pasadena, Pasadena project. Caltrans has approved the legal descriptions and maps for these right-of-way dedications. They were actually already offered to the city at the time the map was recorded back in 2012, but we didn't accept it at the time. They don't have to be. They're irrevocable dedications, so they're just, we're just following through now and the city's officially accepting them with your action. And also, you'll notice that there's a certificate of acceptance attached to each of the separate offers to dedicate. This was a very important time for Caltrans because they, they want this to be recorded at the same time as the dedication. And per a previous resolution that the council approved on May 2018, our city clerk will sign this. But you're going to approve the acceptance of the dedications by the Resolution Number 2389. That's it. I answer any questions if I can.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2023-89?
I'll motion to approve Resolution Number 2023-88.
For a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior absent, councilmember Rosas.
Aye.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Aye.
Councilmember Vazaldi.
Aye.
Mayor Julian.
Aye, all ayes approved. Well, go ahead. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion for adjourn.
Oh, so we get them.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. This meeting is adjourned and we're going to wait a couple of minutes while. I run it to the council Tuesday, October 24th. And we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Costa Junior absent, councilmember Rosas.
President.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Yeah.
Councilmember Vazaldi here. Mayor Julian.
Here. We have four. Will you please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Next item is a moment of thanks, appreciation, and condolences. And I think all of our hearts are with those folks in the Middle East during very trying times. So peace to, we wish there was peace for everyone and safety. Anybody else?
I want to thank the Tetra Style Car Club. I think this is our ninth year supporting, I think, as well as being and taking donations for things. So thank you to the Tetra Style Car Club.
Thank you. Next item is agenda review. At the time, the city council reviewed the board of business. And I think, can I just mention, item nine, we'd like to table that. That's the Public Safety Directors and Chief Cash is here today. And then on the regular business.
Eleven.
Eleven, item 11. The adoption of June 23, City of, City of Guadalupe Prevention Response and Procedure Manual, we want to be here to to kind of entertain discussion and talks about that. And we'll leave 12 on there just to, you know, move on by. So, so we'll go now to community participation. Ceremonial, sorry about that. Swearing in of Jacob Nuno, Fire Captain. Did you save all those people? Is that why?
You all really know him?
Cheapers.
You can come up and take pictures if you want, so don't, don't hesitate to come up.
I got a mic here if you want. Okay.
Bridge, bridge, right?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Okay. Are ready to repeat after me? You've done this before, I know. Okay, I, Jacob Nuno.
I, Jacob Nuno.
Who solemnly swear.
Who solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation.
Without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Police Department, Chief Captain, congratulations, the captain. Let's say, thank you for this opportunity. Thank you to my support system, my family, my girlfriend, everybody. Ready to move forward. It's a learning process, but I'm, I'm looking forward to this challenge and I'll do the best I can. Thank you.
Captain has been a solid member of our fire community, our public safety community. And when we need him for anything, food bank, somebody falling on a, there's one guy that fell on a, off his wheelchair and he was there to help him. And many, many other instances where you communicate with people. And one of the first responders, so it's great to have you part of a solid team. So, and I know Chief Cash would have really wanted to be here to, you know, to welcome you as a captain. So congratulations to you and, and I'm glad to see your family very supportive of you. Because the family of Guadalupe is supporting you too, so welcome. Thank you.
Okay.
I always feel like, I always feel like swearing and ceremony, deal to the state, just get me excited because to step into this role of service for your community is such a commitment and for your family as well, the sacrifice you made to work shifts, to be out there on fall. And so it's so beautiful to have such a great support system here as well. And I love it. It's very exciting.
Thank you all for recording this show. I am. Okay, item six is community participation. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that's not agendaized? All right. Well, seeing no hands, we'll go to item seven, consent calendar. The following items are presented by city councils without discussion of single agenda items. Is there anyone that wishes to pull an item from the consent calendar?
No.
Is there a motion to approve consent calendar?
I motion to approve the consent calendar. I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes. And item eight, city administrative report.
Okay, yeah, the written report, I understand you want me to go over some of the written report verbally, which is fine. And I just want to let you know that Philip, myself, and a very specialized attorney, been working with the L's Union property. And some of the HCD requirements is that is that we had to put property away and advertise it to them for housing purposes. And we reached and passed that deadline and now we can start marketing it in a way that's selling it off for commercial use.
What if, what if we wanted to maintain it, retain it?
You know, that's actually a legal question. I mean.
If we wanted, if we wanted to keep that under we, I'm sure there has to be a market value that we pay. I don't know if anybody wants the money or.
The, I believe, if we wanted to keep it for, I mean, for city use, we would have to speak with.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
We would have to speak with our redevelopment, you know, our successor agency attorney that specializes in this. We would have to go to the Oversight Board, the County Oversight Board, and request a change to our long-term property management plan because it requires us to sell it. Now, it doesn't say how we have to sell it. So what we were proposing as staff is that we would do requests for proposals. And we basically accept ideas from developers for what they thought would be best for that property. And some of them may say, well, I can't do this particular project unless I get the property for free. Others might say, I'll pay top dollar for it because I want to put something that you don't want. You know, there'd be a lot of variety of people who'd be interested. But if you, for example, I heard talk about like a city parking lot or something like that. And it would be a municipal enterprise essentially, that would require a change of the plan and we'd have to get approval from the Department of Finance in Sacramento. I don't know what the odds of that are. I don't think it would probably be insurmountable. That, that's my gut, especially at this point, but all the huddleoo about redeveloping the malls died down and most of the agencies are going away.
Right.
We're moving on. So I think that it would be possible to get that changed if that's something that comes to one standard thing.
I don't know if I want to jump in there already.
Yeah, hot on the tick. Well, I'm part of it is the property doesn't have a lot of value, but those property, those special districts, there's like 14 taxing districts, they still are hot on the money. Let's say it's worth a hundred thousand, we might get five of it. So it's just, um.
They don't want to get five. They don't want to get that.
Yeah, the county, the school and county, I think, give the most, but we would, it, it has more value to us as a property that could either be owned by us or. or as a development piece to the neighboring property or whatever, you know, so it's better as a development property.
One of my thoughts, we need a fire station. That's dilapidated, it's termite ridden, it's outdated. Parking lot just seems like it's, that's not high on my, my priority list, although it's, it's used right now as a parking, parking lot.
It could even be a mixed use, it could be.
Could be.
Half of the fire department and half of the park. I mean, the lot is quite long.
Yeah, it's. It's fifty by three thirty, I think, somewhere in there. Fifty. It sounds like you might want to add that item agendized.
Yes, yes.
I think we should probably do it successor agency agenda. So I'll get back to you on that. I'll speak with our attorney and we'll bring something forward to listen to this option.
Yeah, I, I don't think we'll have to go through the surplus land act again, but that could be an issue if we, because we, we changed the assignment. Now, that's a lot of issues about this. So we do need to agendize it. Thank you.
Also, there's some grant earmarks attached from Townsend website update. Garrett said that'll be rolling out soon. There's additional potential disaster relief funds for Guadalupe. We met with Santa Barbara County and our grant writing group also. There's some transition updates with the Guadalupe Senior Center Meals that you probably want to talk about. Use of food truck for temporary farmer's market. That was in a discussion that Larry's been working on. Also, just the fact that we met last week in a Zoom meeting regarding the consolidated project, the Highway one and Highway one sixty-six. When this was put out, this was put out before we actually had the meeting, so I just wanted to get it in there so you would be updated on it. So short city administrator report, but I just wanted to throw that out for you. End of report unless you have any questions.
Questions, Todd?
I really was excited about the idea of the farmer's market, kind of like a mobile market. So anyway, we can make that happen. I just think that's a nice access point for our citizens to have access to healthy, you know, produce.
Okay, so what? That is, Todd?
That is.
Okay, I, I see Mr. Robson wanted to speak on an item that's not on agenda. We passed that area, but you're more than welcome to, to.
Well, I.
He got stuck. Okay, go ahead. Sorry. Welcome.
Guadalupe students are highly intelligent and love to, they like books, puzzles, games, drawing, playing chess. They do not need to be bribed with interactive machine gun war games in order to utilize the library. Yet, Ed Librarian Jackson's policies have led to an unviable situation. Many patrons no longer use the library. Ed Librarian Jackson does not use the Guadalupe Library. No other branches have numerous employees. Here, there is only one. Jackson said that by allowing students access to these games, maybe they don't use the library. This is a reflection of disdain on the community. Guadalupe students do not need to be bribed with interactive machines and war games in order to utilize the library. Currently, children may use computers without the library card or any ID. Requiring students to at least have a library card or show ID would involve parents and establish a minimum of control. Most students do not wish to play war games. They would like to read, learn and study. They would like to feel the warmth of the town's support in providing the public space of peace and quiet. Encouraging a handful of children who have been sadly addicted to electronics to monopolize it as an arcade drives away patrons of all ages, classes, backgrounds and interests. Library administration does not know who is behind these games nor what effect the programs are having on children. Guadalupe branch does not need to be under the jurisdiction of any other agency. It can reside, for example, in city hall as is done in other municipalities. Their policies can be appropriate for our residents instead of the library being an object of disdain.
Thank you, sir. Right. We're going to be going to ten, right?
I thought. Ten, so yes, I'm sorry, ten.
Don't skip.
No, you just skipped there. Recreation next service manager report. You're, you're on.
So one of the first updates that I want to make is senior fitness classes are posted on social medias, being held at the city hall auditorium. But after speaking with Yolanda who's running them, they would prefer to be at senior center. So they're actually going back to senior center. And that is the senior fitness class is Mondays and Wednesdays from one to one forty-five. And then the line dancing class is Tuesdays and Thursdays from one to two. Tomorrow, we have our pumpkin painting. It is by, or was posted as by reservation, but we do have a couple of spots left. So if there's anybody that's still interested, you can either call the office line or you can DM me on Instagram or message me on Facebook or text me on the, the cell number that's on some of the, the posts as well. So that's tomorrow at one fifteen and it's going to be in the courtyard. So if you're not sure where that's at, you can just go to the auditorium and I'll be in the auditorium and direct you on where to go. And also a thank you to Napomo Pumpkin Patch because they donated all of our pumpkins. A lot of people, she said, were, are not aware that it's even out there. It's a beautiful pumpkin patch. So if you haven't gotten pumpkins yet and you still want to carve or you want to paint or just have some for decoration. It's a really pretty pumpkin patch. They have really beautiful pumpkins. So head out over there. It's on Euclid this road, I think. What else? Oh, the Dia de los Muertos event. Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I got all the dates right. We're going to be having the community of friend of setup day on October thirtieth. So that's, it's coming Monday and that'll be from three to seven. And then the Muertos celebration is going to be November first from three to seven. The community of friend of viewing will be November second, three to seven. And then the of friend of breakdown will be from three to seven on that Friday. So it'll be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
The, the vets?
Yes, Veterans Hall. I just don't want to miss something. There are also the school, the Kiwanis Club. And Little House by the Park partnered to put on trunk retreat. So that's going to be on Halloween night over at McKenzie. They're going to have roller skates and lots of booths. And obviously the touch of style trucks, cars out there with their trunks full of candy. So it's going to be really fun if anyone wants to go out there.
Cake walk, they're doing like.
Yes, cake walk. Yeah, so that would be lots of fun. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I'm missing. Oh, there will not be drop-in volleyball or basketball this week because we're going to have the floors refinished in the gym. So that'll start back up, not, I, I believe next Wednesday is when it should start back up with volleyball. Also, thank you to everybody that came out to movie night on Friday. It was a lot of fun. We had prizes for best costume overall, cutest costumes, scariest costume and most creative. So the kids had a lot of fun dressing up for that. We did musical chairs. Butcher Lobel shop came out, a sweet affair came out and they both brought their snacks and sweets and stuff. So everybody really enjoyed that. And then we watched Hocus Pocus and the Irish Family. So it was a lot of fun.
I heard about it at school. I was telling Hannah earlier that some of my students attended and they were very excited to tell me all about it. So very well received event. Are you going to be doing any more movies? I think. Stay tuned.
Probably not because I only have a few weeks left, so.
Agenda.
I'll zoom in.
That's a good plan. Just tell them this is the date and this is what you need to do.
I'll see, I'll talk to, because we have another Rec and Park Commission meeting before I leave. So I'll see if one of them maybe wants to be in charge of it. It's really not that difficult to set up. We have all the equipment and everything, so I would just have to show them how to do it, but it's really not that hard. So I'll see if one of them maybe wants to take it on. But that's all I have.
Yeah, question regarding the exercise group.
Yes.
Is there, is there a person that's in charge of that?
Oh, Yolanda, I forget what her last name is, but yeah, she filled out a volunteer application and everything already. So we have that on file. So it's technically being run through the city kind of now, but just on a volunteer basis.
All right, good. As long as that, you know, that the volunteer forms.
They play some wild music.
Yeah, they do.
Another item, you know, we talked about janitorial services over there. Is anything happening with that?
I don't know if you saw the emails that Eddie sent this afternoon. I think it was either this afternoon or, or yeah, this morning. He sent two estimates and he was waiting on you guys to see if you preferred either one. There was one for Jane E. that was a little bit pricier and then another one from Molly's, I think, yeah. So I think he was just waiting to see which one you guys.
So they were emailed to you or?
No, to you and Todd, I believe. I think both you guys were on it.
Yeah, Eddie's suggesting probably the.
What, what's happening is that since Las Amigos, Guadalupe is not handling anymore. They had, apparently they had someone going in and cleaning. The city staff has been picking that up.
Yeah.
And I think that, I know that someone mentioned that the floor had, it should be about three years ago, it was stripped by volunteers. So the place needs some, a lot of work. Because we're using it on a regular basis, that restroom, you know, we got, had some complaints that it was unsanitary. I, I think that was off, off a little bit, but the city staff has been doing a good job and putting, taking care of things. So, so I'll look at that, that quote.
Okay.
Any questions? Good. All right, thank you. Yeah, regular business, we're picking eleven up. The chief's not here and we're going to twelve.
And then Philip's going to handle this because of the Brown Act and a statement, he's going to be summarizing this room there.
Okay.
Yes, yes, thank you. Normally the approval of the contract, it's not controversial because the terms here have already been negotiated. Would, would be on the consent agenda, but the Brown Act does require a public statement about the terms of an executive's compensation in, in the chief and city administrator qualify as enclosed because you directly negotiated them. So briefly, the, the new contract is before you tonight for approval. Is a two-year employment agreement effective retroactively to overnight, I believe.
Yes.
The, it is approximately a seven point five percent increase over the chief's current salary to approximately one hundred forty-eight thousand nine hundred forty-eight dollars, forty-eight cents, which is seventy-one dollars and sixty cents per hour. And then in the second year of the agreement, there's five dollar per hour raised to seventy-six point sixty, sixty-one cents per hour, so that he'll earn one hundred fifty-nine thousand three hundred forty-eight dollars, forty-eight cents. Approximately seven percent increase. Aside from the base salary increase, there aren't any really significant changes to the provisions of the current employment agreement. The. The position is at will, but the council would be obligated to pay six months' salary if the agreement was terminated without cause. The health benefits, health insurance premiums match those provided to other employees in the city. Chief shall approve ten hours of sick, excuse me, sick leave and ten hours of vacation leave each month. And how, you shall have forty hour, forty hours of administrative leave each year. And that leave does not carry over. It's one of those types that's used or lost during the calendar year. Chief will also receive paid holidays and be entitled to take off all the city approved holidays. Finally, the agreement provides that chief shall have a uniform reimbursement allowance up to twelve hundred dollars annually. And that certain expenses are, that are job related will be paid on his behalf, including certain post police officer standards, training mandated, management courses and other expenses such as membership fees for California Police Chiefs Association and, and Santa Barbara County Law Enforcement Chief Association. And that he'll also have the use of an emergency response vehicle at city's expense for both official business and transportation to and from his personal residence. And the purpose of this is he tended to expedite the emergency response to the city at all hours while he's off duty. And lastly, he's entitled to the, the city's retirement PEPRA based formula two percent at fifty-seven percent, excuse me, two per seven, at fifty-seven based formula. That's it. Thank you. The only thing that I noticed in the agreement, that other, myself, including all the managers is they get eighty hours of administrative leave and I'm just wondering if, I mean, I know that this is a separate contract. Does the council want to also, I don't know if it's an oversight or if it's just something from before, but it does. Like, for example, Hannah and Denise and myself, we get eighty hours of administrative leave. And I noticed it's forty hours here. I didn't catch that. I certainly didn't either. I just went from the previous contract. So that may have been addressed. I, I don't think it's appropriate to do that right now. But we can bring that back and amend the, the contract to make, make sure that that wasn't, I mean, or you could just. I mean, I, I'd like to determine if that was an oversight or mistake or if that was actually part of the agreement and you guys should have a chance to, to consider that. So since that wasn't on the agenda, I guess it's close enough if you want to take it up now. But I don't know if we know it's an oversight or not.
I'd rather pick it up.
Okay.
We can move, move through this process.
What'd you say?
I said I, I would want to pick it up right now.
Okay.
Questions from the council? Is there a motion to approve authorized the mayor to sign a new, let me agree, Michael Cash?
I'll notice. I'll raise the major executing of, but maybe not with Chief Cash.
Your second? Your second, any discussion? All those who favor the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All ayes. I want to stand one. Thank you. All right.
Excuse me, can I clarify? I'm sorry, I just didn't hear. So the issue of the admin leave is a non-issue?
I, I didn't say that. I, I, I'd said, I mean, I didn't know about it. I don't know if it's a mistake.
Well, I'm saying, probably because I'm, I'm, it was made to approve it.
No, the motion was not made. It's not, the, the, the motion was to approve the contract as written.
And then you can address that later.
Address the eighty, whether he gets another forty hours of admin leave at a later time.
That way you're not delaying.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, they don't want to take that up right now. Okay, future agenda items. Okay, announcements, council activity reports. Mr. Fernandez?
At my work, I attended a senior plan workshop at the Santa Barbara County. And something interesting that came out was that the livability index that Guadalupe scored higher than Sanrio Long Hook Santa Barbara. It was really exciting to.
Livability index. So what does that mean? A place to live?
A great place to live here and I totally agree with that. Today I did end up attending the United Way real cost of measure. And it stated that forty-two percent of households in Santa Barbara County are below, forty-two percent are below real cost measures here in the Santa Barbara County. A family of four would need to hold more than three old. A family of four, um, would need to hold more than three full-time minimum wage jobs to achieve economic security. And so we see a lot of, um, cost of rises, um, living, and we're gonna see them down and struggling, and finding resources and opportunities for them. Um, it's something I'm looking for.
One second.
Yeah. Um, we have I think this weekend's a culmination of, we have, uh, one of the pool dogs have got two teams in the um, playoff bracket. We have our juniors made it in, I believe they're playing this Saturday at Rigetti at eleven AM. Our intermediates, um, because of their, uh, position, will take a bye this weekend, and will be playing, uh, next weekend. So.
Exciting.
Yeah.
I feel like especially during playoffs, the community really comes out to support the whole box, which is always exciting. If you don't get a chance to attend one, or if you haven't had a chance to attend one, I highly recommend. They're a lot of fun. You see everyone come out to cheer, and so it's, it's just a really nice community event.
It is.
Yeah.
Be nice to have that, all the circus there, and then Oconom Park where you can play here.
Yeah, well, so you did get, so, um, Craft Country had their annual
Twenty-third, no, twenty, since it was the twenty-three?
Yeah, um, so my son ran, um, Mr. Bauer's still out there, he's been here, a, a loyal coach, no longer a teacher, he's retired, so appreciation to him for, um, really bringing schools to the area that don't typically come, uh, from Slow County and then from Santa Maria. I believe Fessler was there, um, and some Slow County schools, so it's always exciting, um, to see everyone come out and participate, um, and that was a really positive event.
All right, uh, I want, I forgot to ask a question of you, Hannah, regarding the vegetable truck, or whatever it's called, can you give us an update on it?
Uh, in terms of?
What's going on?
It was covered in the report.
Uh, in talks.
Yeah.
I, I've seen that, uh, emails between you and, and Larry.
So for that, they have, um, they just seem to, I think from what Larry said, they need to get their Guadalupe business license.
That's right.
Um, but outside of that, they already have like their health permit and
Okay.
everything, uh, ready to go, so they're just, I, I don't think Larry really needs it from what I understand, but I think he was just saying in general to get some sort of like site map to see where it is that they're gonna set up. Um, I need to follow up with, uh, Stephanie Klaus on that, but the last time that we had talked, she was thinking about just using like the dirt lot, so that way the, the parking lot is still available, and it's not taking up too much room or anything like that, um, which I don't think it will.
It's only like three stalls or something, but
Yeah, it's, it's not gonna take up that much room, so I think it'll be a really big positive thing.
The only thing with the back and the decomposed granite is that you can't see
Yeah.
See what's going on.
That's true. Um, I'll, I'll talk to them about that and see what they wanna do.
Which group is that?
Uh.
It's not the, um, Farmers Rocker Group?
Which one?
The one that, what's it called?
No.
I don't think it's
It's like the thing. Uh, they're trying to work, I signed at the last meeting, they're trying to figure out if they can work with, uh, the GBA. Um, yeah.
Okay.
Evolution.
Groups of all, they are trying to use a Long Po Route one, because they have a mobile market, and so that mobile market has that, that they can come out to Guadalupe. Um, and so they're trying to figure out, um, who can oversight, because Fresa does not have a nonprofit.
So, so, but to clarify what you were saying, the truck itself is not Fresa, it's
Right.
Route one, but Fresa is the one that has been trying to put it together from the beginning.
Okay, good.
That's what I'm wondering, if now that there's a truck that could successfully be there independently, if that would be an opportunity for other community groups to kind of let it grow, and hopefully evolve more people get involved. I think there's a lot of opportunity there. I know people, not just Fresa, but I know many other communities have expressed interest in having farmers markets and, and access to, um, food, vegetables, and other goods.
I think what's hard about that, and this is for community events also, I was actually just talking to, um, Dr. Handel about this, this morning. Um, for swap needs, farmers market, community events, anything like that, there's just so much red tape involved in trying to get groups together, so the, the loophole is the, the mobile trucks, because the, the difference between it being hard and not hard is that the trucks are their site, so if, let's say, Papatio wanted to have a booth out there, they would have to have a whole separate permit to be at a different location than where their actual business is located, where mobile trucks that are food trucks, that is their site. They have it per, their truck is actually permitted to be out there, so that's um, one of the reasons why whenever I've held events, I always use mobile trucks, and I know the community isn't super happy about it because of the brick and mortar, but it's just so much to handle that I see why Fresa has had a hard time trying to put it together and, um, get somebody that can coordinate all of that, because there's a lot that goes into it.
Now, you're saying a truck. I'm trying to envision, what we're, what we're looking at is a truck, a vegetable truck.
I, I can ask for pictures. I personally have not seen it, so I don't know what it looks like, but
Look up Long Po, it's a Long Po mobile, um, truck that they're using. So if you look it up, Long Po's farmers market on a mobile, that's the one that would be coming here. Is it fully enclosed? I don't know.
Is it a vegetable truck?
Is it like a black? A black?
Oh. Anyway.
Yeah.
Well, we'll figure that out.
I think for purposes of, let's say, public health and new qualifications, to have it enclosed, so you can say, okay, this is clean.
But you're not cooking anything.
No, you're not, but you're holding products.
Well, the farmers markets, that you go to Morro Bay, you go to even to Long Po.
Orchid has a wonderful farmers market.
Uh, that big Santa Maria, so I don't know if they have one on the
They still do.
Okay, anyway, that's
I do think it's something that you start small
Yeah.
and grow it from there. That's kind of like how Orchid has started. They started really small, and then it sort of ballooned from there.
Okay, um, I think we're on announcements. Uh, we met this, there was three days, uh, there was one day Thursday, we had three or four Zooms. We Zoomed, uh, it was myself, Todd, uh, Denise, I don't know who else, regarding, uh, uh, CDBG money, the Baca funds, and how to, uh, uh, there was some reporting requirements that the, that the state required, that we're trying to catch up with to find out what they needed, and I know that you've been, uh, Denise, you've been, I saw some other communication today with them, uh, what, what was that about there?
So, um, I think what they're waiting on, one, they need an email from you stating that it's okay for Tom to work on the CDBG grants.
I really
And then, um, so really the communication with me and Lauren was to get him access to, um,
You see.
the, the East D5, and then, um, he's been finishing up on the, um, closeout for the CD one. Um, and then we have to send an activity report for, um, CD two and three. Um, and I think, other than that, everything else is just kind of starting to
Right.
get a handle on.
One of the things, uh, with that, there was a couple hundred thousand dollars left for the, uh, business, the um, resources, yeah. So we don't wanna lose that. You could dis, disencumber that, well, then take it back, and it's, it's, if, if you have it in your hand, why, why, why give it back? So it's, it's our task, uh, then now, uh, to find out if there's any reason, any individuals out there needs resources to
And then I think, uh, coming around the new year, there's more we can apply for.
Uh, why, why, why do we get extended, so? Yeah, on that side, maybe others.
I met with Lauren, um, separately, um, uh, again, cause our original meeting was, was with Shannon.
Right.
Um, and so I met with Lauren, um, just to see if our, um, CD two, three grant changes in any way based on the changes that we've had to do with, um, switching to AAA and there, so, um, yeah, I think it's, you know, they've been really helpful.
Yes.
And, and giving us, um, the information we need to make sure that we're on track with our grants.
And one of the, one of the, you know, last year, we actually, Tom actually increased from two staff to one and a half staff to another half staffs, so that we can actually take that resource and have a city staff or a staff person at the senior center to, to basically expand outreach to seniors in coordination with, uh, AAA.
Yeah, and it self-wants within our, our regulations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, then we went with, uh, the Zoom with Caltrans, Casa Dada, and city staff, that's what the, the fruits of our labor was was, uh, seen tonight. Uh, we also let, uh, uh, Dwayne, the Public Works, met with, uh, County Public Works, we're writing a sewer treatment plan. So we're gonna move that over to that side of town now, so, just kidding. Well, that's gonna go around now.
Everybody here next week.
Now, next to the, the Escalante Court, there's gonna be the sewer treatment plant. No, it's not, there's a lot, and then, and Dwayne could tell you that our, our sewer treatment plans need some help, um, so that's, that's a big task.
Stay the earth.
That's not a, that's not a, uh, putting in a task, so. That's all I have.
CDBG, well, we, we also received money for that lift station, that's
Well, that's right, yeah, the lift station, also the rail track, rail, the
Oh, yeah, uh, Amtrak, yeah.
Yeah. Nice, so. Okay, all right, where are we now? Close session, is there a motion to adjourn to close session?
I'll motion to adjourn to session.
Is there a second? I'll load the data, the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Yeah.